Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Workshop Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of this, uh, I apologize, it's Monday. The council thanks you for being part of your city government. At workshop meetings, the council discusses issues, but no formal action is taken. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-w.gov/agenda. This meeting is being televised live on PSC TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Retcheland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous chat, previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager or city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And if I'm not mistaken, we do have hard copy agendas at the back table at the end of the room. Thank you, and with that, may I get roll call?
Council members, Campos?
Here.
None.
Here.
Roach?
Present.
Serrano?
Here.
Mayor Proten Maloney?
Present.
And Mayor Barajas?
Present, and with that, would you please join me with the, for the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Now we move on to item four in our agendas, verbal reports from council members. Do we have any council members that wish to share? Council member, Campos?
Thank you, Mayor. I had our monthly board meeting with Ben Franklin Transit. The hot topic the last couple of months has been whether or not to, I guess the right word would be repeal taxes, or adjust the tax rate to lower it. And the two items at hand, one was for the board to be able to have the power to go ahead and just do that as they see fit. The other item that is still on the table is to send it to the voters, and we were able to come to an agreement. All the board members decided at this time, we as a board didn't want to do that. So, we're gonna try to workshop with the new general manager whenever they arrive and figure out our best path forward.
That's good, thank you for that. Mayor Proten Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. Just want to report that we had the periodic meeting of the regional public facility district. So, was attended that with me and my fellow member Campos. And the discussion, of course, was how is the regional public facility district affected by the successful vote for the Pasco Public Facility District for their aquatic facility? So we had, you know, a good conversation about that. We had a number of new board members that need to be brought to speed, both with what has happened in the past with, you know, Kennewick trying to run theirs, you know, three times, and how all those that plays out. So, it sounds like everyone's interested in basically, in essence mothballing the regional PFD board, in essence, holding it into, you know, some sort of cold storage at minimum levels, just in case it's needed for in the future. But more or less, the Pasco's project makes a regional effort, you know, that removes any taxing authority they may have at this point in time. So, each of the cities can go alone for various projects, but the regional doesn't have, you know, any power issue they can put out to the voters of the region for increasing sales tax. So, yeah, that's, that's the update for that. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else wishes to share? I will share that I, on Wednesday, the eighth, I was appointed to the AWC Large City Advisory Committee, and with that joined several other committee members to discuss projects that would benefit our side, our large cities on this side of the mountains. So just really more of an introductory meeting to discuss large projects, really. Ordinance Amendments to Pasco Municipal Code Chapter 13.80 Stormwater and Director Worland.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing to you a fairly new member of our engineering staff in Public Works. I'm gonna turn this item over to our environmental compliance coordinator, who is Michael Hanau.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I mentioned earlier, I'm Michael Hanau, the new environmental compliance coordinator, and I'm here to talk about some of the updates that are needed to the code when it comes to storm water. So before I start talking about what needs to be updated, I just want to give a quick background on the permit and how the permit came about. So the Eastern Washington Phase Two Stormwater Permit implements the rules and regulations established by the Clean Water Act and the State Washington Pollution Control Act. Those regulations are there to protect the waters of the state. Their stormwater permit also concentrates in regulated municipal separate stormwater system, also known as MS4. In the current permit cycle that we are in, there are several special conditions that must be completed by specific dates specified by the permit. Many of those conditions require the city to participate in public education outreach programs, effectiveness studies, planned improvements to the stormwater operation system, and changes to the Pasco Municipal Code to meet current stormwater standards. So some of those changes that I'm gonna be talking about is gonna give the permit, oh, now we're gonna have the ability, the permit in special condition, sorry, the permit has a special condition that requires the city to update the code to meet the latest definitions, definition to describe the type of discharges into the stormwater system. Those changes is gonna give us the ability to have three specific classes of waste of water, stormwater discharges into the system. So now we have allowable discharges, we have conditionally allowable discharges, and the difference between those two is that allowable, allowable, conditionally allowable discharges just need an extra, a few more conditions to meet. And whatever does unfold within these two categories is considered an illicit discharge. So pretty much the idea is that when you have two different groups, and whatever does unfold within allowable discharge and conditionally allowable discharge, now we can identify as an illicit discharge. So I'm gonna talk about some examples of what a allowable discharge is. So an allowable discharge, we have precipitation, which does the reason why we have a stormwater system. We have groundwater, so when we have groundwater rising, that counts as an allowable discharge. We also have foundation drains, air conditioning condensation, and agriculture irrigation. That all falls within the classification of an allowable discharge. Conditionally allowable discharge, for those, we are talking about hydrant systems, so every so often we have to flush our lines. So the condition that we have to meet there is that we have to make sure that the chlorine levels are less than 0.1 milligrams per liter to be discharged into the stormwater system. We also have runoff from construction sites, and a lot of that is met through the construction permits. And then we also have the newest one, which is gonna be talking about pool discharges. So now pool discharges fall within the allowable, or conditionally about allowable discharge, and the conditions are that before you discharge or empty your pool, the chlorine needs to be removed, the pH needs to be balanced, and the flow in which the water is being discharged needs to be regulated. So in our current code, we refer as, we classify stormwater as authorized and permitted. So some of the changes that we are proposing are, instead of being called authorized, that will be, that'll be now conditionally allowable, and that part of the code describes what falls into conditionally allowable discharges, and which activities fall within that, within that classification. And the other class that we have in Chapter 138130 is permitted. Now those are considered allowable discharges, and he also gives a list of which activities fall within those regulations or within that classification. So one of the things that we are trying to achieve here, especially since the main activity that's going to change is the discharge in a pool, is that we wanna make sure the public is educated on these changes, because we wanna be in compliance with our permit, but we also want the public to be in compliance with our code. So, the next step is, we are currently working on developing educating material, like pamphlets and infographics, that we can use on our Facebook page, website, to educate the public on how to properly discharge their pool, which activities they need to meet when they're discharging the pool, and also educate the public about the new changes of which activities are conditionally allowable and allowable discharges. Because the whole goal is to maintain a safe environment in our water, waterways. So, once again, what we're proposing is an amendment of this City of Pasco Municipal Code of Chapter 138120 and Chapter 138130, and this is to be in compliance with the Department of Ecology Phase Two Stormwater Permit. Any questions?
Do we have any questions, Councilmember Serrano?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. So, is the impetus here ecology requirements in the permit, or ecology comments on an application?
No, these are requirements in the permit.
And at this point, has the permit been issued?
The permit has been issued. It was issued in 2019.
Okay. I guess my concern here is having worked with ecology on permitting scheme in a prior professional life, typically they'll issue conditions, but they're not always based in law. It's based on a desire for what ecology believes the interpretation is. Did we, is there a basis in law for each of these?
Yeah, so all these, all these regulations are based, or backed by the Clean Water Act and then the State Pollution Control Act.
Okay.
So they, they were pretty much instructed to create a system that will make sure that the state is doing everything they can to meet those acts. And then we are in our third cycle of stormwater permits.
Okay. My, I guess my biggest concern is when we're drilling down to the level of dechlorinated swimming pools, and telling people when, where, and how they can discharge and to what level, that to me is problematic, when we as a city are forced by a state agency to ensure that, I mean, obviously we don't want highly chlorinated waters going into the storm drain system, but at the same time, we're taking probably the most base fundamental, you know, property rights here and making them very prescriptive. I adamantly oppose that. And, again, having worked with ecology, I've seen them issue conditional permits or conditions and permits when they're not based in law, but they're actually based in ecology's interpretation of law. So I wanna tread carefully here before we issue that. I think from my perspective, I guess I'd like maybe some more background information, either the permit itself, or ecology's comments, and if it's too late to push back on those requirements of the permit, those conditions, so be it. But if it's not, and this is still in an interim process, I'd like the city to, from my perspective, I can't speak for all seven of us, push back on anything that's not black law, right?
Yeah, and I can definitely try, I'll get that information to you. And all I know regarding this current permit cycle is when the permit started, there was a period of reviews and comments, and then the permit was issued, but I can definitely get that information available.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yeah, we probably missed the window to do anything, any challenge, but yeah, I do appreciate that, so thank you. I guess, one final part in common, to the extent that we have some of these overarching permits that might impact the way our residents are treated, or, you know, they do their standard living, I'd love to be aware of that prior to signing off, because as a Pasco resident, I may have comments, and so I appreciate that.
Thank you for your comments, Mayor Proten Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Barajas, and I'll strongly echo my fellow council members' comments. When I'm looking at these, these are, these are brought, no, not directed to you, I'm ranting on a soapbox here, so just understand that.
You can share mine.
These are, you know, these changes do have broad-based impacts across the city, and I imagine the state did not pass down funding to go along with these. So, this back to, when we, when you hear council members or others rail against this idea of unfunded mandates, this is exactly the sort of thing we're talking about. To have individual homeowners or landowners comply with some of these rules will require them to invest money to tear up their yards and install new infrastructure for themselves. And where's the money for that, right? It's gonna come out of their pocket. Does it improve the quality of life? It really doesn't, and all it is, is just, just a big headache and expense for people. So I'm always frustrated to see these, and that's, that's one of the reasons, one of the ways that we, as a city, continue to lobby in Olympia to help them understand, you know, when you're passing down these unfunded mandates, it hurts people, especially people in well-developed neighborhoods. I will ask, are there any, it looks like for the most part, these are gonna be pretty broad-based and personal sort of impacts to individual landowners. Are there any infrastructure changes the city can make to help mitigate any of these impacts?
So, the main, as mentioned earlier, the main, the main one is gonna be like addressing the pool discharges, and perhaps I didn't explain that clearly, to dechlorinate a pool is a fairly known method, so I don't, I don't believe it's gonna require actual infrastructure to be built to deal with that aspect. And that, that's the idea that we're taking, we're gonna, the approach is to educate the public how to reach that point, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we do, we have gotten some funding to help with the education part of stormwater.
I appreciate that, at least. I would note that one of these here also, this allows you to wash your car using soap in your driveway, so when we're talking about pools as being one item, but it appears, if I'm not mistaken, that that is no longer allowable thing for the City of Pasco to do.
Correct.
So, yeah, when we're talking about these things, these are, these are important and impactful things, so I, again, I agree with my fellow council member Serrano that this is unfortunate and very frustrating to see, but thank you for making sure we're in compliance with the law.
Yeah.
Obviously, that's paramount, paramount. Thank you.
Any further questions on this topic? Looks like there's none, but we would like to, following Mayor Proten Maloney's and Councilmember Serrano's indications, and just get a little bit more information on that. Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
And welcome.
And welcome. And with that, we move on to item B, the latecomer agreements discussion. For that, we have our city attorney, Eric Ferguson.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is a, more of a heads up than anything, just that you're gonna start to see a lot of these come your way. There's a significant backlog of these agreements. These are latecomer agreements, which are, basically what their tool is, is to encourage development for folks to be willing to make that investment in a particular facility to develop, and then offer them an opportunity for, to be able to recoup some of those costs down the road for folks that come late to the development. So, it's a way for them to offset some of that cost and potentially recoup some of that investment. So, we don't have a choice to not enter these with regard to utility services, we do have a choice with regard to street facility latecomer agreements. The, the process can be quite long, from initial application to beginning of the project, and then construction, ultimately dedication and acceptance by the city, and then finally the actual entering of the latecomer agreement with the city to then be recorded. So, the only other thing I really wanted to make sure that folks were aware of is that there's a key distinction between a latecomer agreement and an LID. The biggest difference is, is that there is no guaranteed recoupment of the investment. So what that means is, is that you, this is not a lien on someone's home or their property, rather it is an assessment, so that if they ever do decide to connect to the facility, they pay that fee upfront, so that the person who was the original developer can then receive that back. But there is no guaranteed investment by the developer that they will ever receive funds on that. So, it's a tool that's obviously gotten more common in Pasco because of the rapid development, for lack of a better word. So we are gonna have, we have quite a few of these things that are in their final stages, and they'll be heading your way, and just wanted to give you a chance to take a look at some of the tools we'll use. In response to, Mayor Proten Maloney's had an inquiry from him earlier about ways that we can expedite this process, and we do need to update our ordinance with regard to PMC 1425, and we've got some significant areas that will improve the process, but at this time, we really need to get these off our books and recorded on properties, so that folks can start to be able to recoup some of these processes, or these, these proceeds.
Perfect, thank you for that. Do we have any questions or comments from our council? Seeing none, Mr., right here.
Yeah, too close, right? This is probably better asked of Mr. Worley or Mr. Zabel. What's the inventory of foreseeable latecomer agreements presently? I mean, it sounds like, from what Mr. Ferguson's indicating, this is kind of a hot topic, with a handful of places, I recall, maybe a month, month and a half ago, we had this on one of the properties for sewer.
Sure. Yeah, no, that was, that was a good example of one of the few that actually did, folks did request a hearing. There was a group of notices, probably about six projects that went out for notices at that time, and they range from, you know, a few hundred dollars, a few thousand dollars in some cases, to a hundred, a thousand dollars or so, in terms of some of these assessments. So, all of them have gone through that process, and they're now at the final stage where we need to authorize the city manager to enter these contracts with the developers, so they can be recorded. But we've got several more in the final stages. These six are in the final stage right now.
Okay. So in terms of, and good evening, Mayor Council. So in terms of frequency and what might be in the future, that probably fall into a couple of categories, as we start to see perhaps some of the donut hole areas develop, you're gonna see latecomer agreements filed there. Now, I will say that depending on what portion of the donut hole, there may not be really, there may not be readily developable land nearby, so those, those could sit dormant for a long time before they're ever acted upon, anybody ever connected to them. However, when we get out in the newer UGA areas, where you have a lot of vacant ground, of my, our experience in Pasco, and certainly for those of us who have been in other places, development doesn't necessarily occur one parcel at a time, north to south or east to west. They'll jump around a bit, and so, those are large parcels out there, for instance, and so you might have a, as much as a quarter section, or quarter of a mile of water or sewer line that needs to be constructed to get to a particular parcel. And so when that occurs, the two half parcels, the two half sections in between the quarter that's being developed would have a latecomer agreement on them. And as they developed, they'd pay their proportionate share of those lines.
Thank you.
Excellent, appreciate that. And just to kind of boil it down, sounds like we've got six in process and another handful pending, with possibly lots, lots more.
I think these will, you know, some of the difficulties you run into are the number of parcels, and that has to do with notice and legal descriptions and everything else. One of the big ones we worked on was the water line up, Kohler, for instance, and that had a ton of already platted parcels on it by the time we got all the information from the, from the developer, to where we could develop the, they were platted, but they weren't developed at the time. And so you had hundreds and hundreds of lots. So if we can catch this and really fine tune our system with the development of the community as we, as we work through some of the newer areas while the parcels are still large, then we're dealing with a handful of parties on the latecomer side, rather than perhaps dozens or maybe even hundreds in some cases. Thank you, thank you.
And if I could just add one final thought, is that this is, this is really a service that the city provides. The city does not really receive a benefit. We are required to enter these, as I said, for utilities, and we recruit some of those costs, but they're not near what, the amount of cost that goes into having to go through these processes. So, folks, a lot of times will confuse the fact that a latecomer agreement is coming along, and that the city is using this as a tool to recoup their investment, and we're clearly just to pass through as required by the legislature. So, we can also be a developer and have a latecomer, but in 95% of the cases, that's not the case. So, yeah, we do it as a service to the community.
Thank you. Just one quick question, and notice has been sent out, efforts, okay.
Yeah, so this is, this is the final stage where it's passed all the due process requirements, and the only thing left is to actually put pen to paper.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much for that. No further questions from council? Thank you so much, Mr. Kerr. So moving on to item, sorry, Mr. Ferguson.
I take that as a compliment.
Thank you.
You've aged a lot over the past.
You know what I'm saying? I wish I would look that good.
Now we have the Ask Pasco app presentation by Mr. Funpar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we'll do a little overview of the Ask Pasco application, and there's a little picture of it. The Ask Pasco app is a resident engagement tool, or maybe sometimes you've heard of it as a 3-1-1 application. So basically, it handles all our service requests coming in from residents, whether that be potholes or code complaints, it can be police concerns, traffic, what have you. It all comes into the city. Other tools on that is, are employment opportunities, utility payments, parks and recreation links, and city news. So it's kind of a multi-function tool to connect the residents to city, to the city, excuse me. It was deployed in 2021, January 2021, and that was after months of extensive, extensive research from several different vendors. In the end, we chose the city source, and now it's rock solid. And mostly, that was the reason we did that, was the support for custom language translation versus just relying on machine translation. So, given our large Spanish-speaking population, we wanted to make sure we're communicating clearly. And I want to thank Finance Director Sigdel for spearheading the deployment phase. That was a long phase, and she did an excellent job making sure it worked as advertised. Some of the ways we've been marketing the Ask Pasco app, website, Pulse, radio Pulse, video Pulse, and social media, press releases, and in, for example, this month's utility bills, there's a flyer in there, and we're actually doing some direct mail through, it's the, I'm trying to remember, Hometown Savings Value Magazine, that'll go directly to residents, so a little advertising in that, and an example of the advertising. So that was just an example of our radio advertisement that goes out, and then this is also streamed on YouTube.
Means for upcoming.
And, here's an example, obviously it's an app, but you can also access it on a desktop machine, so this is what it looks like here. You can go ahead and create a request, and you can do that anonymously as well. So, basically, you create your own account, enter the information, and submit the request. And, I'm out of here, sorry. So, total downloads for the app, and again, this is just the app, again, you can access it via a desktop machine. So we got approximately over 2,000 downloads, and that's through April. April. And that number continues to climb as more marketing occurs. So it's been getting out there, obviously. And mostly, as you can see, that's mostly iOS users at this point. Here's a little chart of our total reports, open and closed since inception to beginning of May. Some of the spikes in here, I'll point some of these out here and here, are actually an example of some of the creative ways staff is using Ask Pasco. These spikes are actually from our graffiti abatement crew. So they're actually using Ask Pasco as their, kind of their work ticket system. So as they see graffiti and as they're reporting, they're entering it into Ask Pasco and logging them out. So these are just them, the graffiti abatement closing those graffiti complaints out. So, but as you can see, we've remained steady as far as reports and typical average day, or so just over about six, six reports a day since inception. And our average time to close has just been over a week. So we've been getting to those reports as expeditiously as possible. Some reports take longer than others. Obviously, if someone has a sidewalk panel that they want replaced in the middle of winter, that's obviously gonna have to wait. But our graffiti abatement crews, especially code enforcement, they've all done a good job about addressing those concerns as quickly as possible. Total reports and status of those. So as you can see, there's that graffiti number here. I apologize that text is a little bit smaller. But as you can see, they've been a great utilizer of that. And also, as I mentioned, code enforcement. So next steps, we're continuing to keep response times as low as possible. And not just, you know, we acknowledge your, your report, but actually completing those reports and closing those out. Continuous marketing, as I mentioned, additional training for new employees as we acquire new employees, and refreshers. Sometimes people don't access the system all that often and they need a little refresher on that. And then additional modified workflows where needed. So as things are coming in and maybe people aren't, residents aren't reporting it necessarily where the best place that we can modify the workflow so they can get that to the appropriate personnel. In addition to that, users have reported some issues with the app that we have submitted to Rock Solid and they've actually will modify as far as another, another release as far as some features. For example, adding additional pictures onto a report after the fact. So you make your report, but then there, maybe there's some additional pictures you want to submit. Currently, the app wouldn't let you do that, but it will be able to do that in the future. And that's because of some feedback we've got from residents. So with that, that was it for Ask Pasco. We'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Funfar. We do have our questions. Councilwoman Roach.
Mr. Funfar, can residents email council members through the app?
They, not directly, no. They can make a report and that gets submitted to staff and then staff boards that on. So, but there's no direct, direct link, if you will, to council. But certainly, we could take a look at that if, if we desired.
Just out of curiosity, I knew on my end that they're being forwarded, but just wondering what that connection point was, whether it could be made or not. In the, the kind of slide that has the two pie charts, on the second one, request by status, there were a few categories. I was curious about those that canceled, could not verify it, or not an issue. Is that determined by staff? Or is that, is that resident determined that they're canceling their request?
Yeah, no, that's, that's staff determined. But those numbers, as you can see, are pretty small. And most of those were actually during testing. So this is total lifetime. So typically, yeah, we don't just close it about saying, you know, this isn't an issue. So like I said, most of those were, were done during testing. So. And some of those could be, well, for example, when I personally dealt with, someone had a animal complaint that was in Burbank. So obviously, that's not something the city can address. So we made sure to connect them with Walloa County in that respect.
So in the, just out of curiosity, in the event that somebody, because I've been directing residents to the Ask Pasco app when I don't know exactly what department it goes to and it's, it's more efficient for a resident to use it. Let's say if it's ten thirty PM, they're not going to get ahold of any one of us right then and there. And we'll go with the example that you had, for example, something that's taking place in Burbank and not actually in their city. So do they hear back directly from a staff member to say, to say to that effect, we don't service that, that city?
Oh, yes, yes. I mean, the app does a, very much encourages staff to reach out and with personal messages related, directly related to that incident. So in that example, yeah, I made sure to refer them to, like I said, Walloa County. So, yeah, just, it's not an automatic machine. Oh, it's not a problem, basically type of thing. So.
Thank you.
Sure.
And if I may, Mr. Funfar, I'll add to that answer. I've used the app over the weekend. Obviously, there's no staff. You do get an immediate reply that someone will respond to you. But then usually by Monday, an actual person will address the, the matter. But yeah, it's been very, very, very fast on getting the response. Thank you for that. Mayor Portem Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. And I'll just, I'll just say that I've, I've used this to submit, I don't know, maybe a few dozen requests. So since, since its release and it's, it's been fantastic. It's been fantastic for me to use. Super easy. I remember one incident set, I'd like to, I'll brag on the city a bit here. I was walking downtown for something at Peanuts Park, down Lewis Street, and I saw some gang tagging on one of the buildings right there. So I took a picture. I, I think I paused for maybe ten seconds, just long enough to steady my camera, take a picture, submitted it, geo-tagged it as I, as I'm walking down to Peanuts Park, didn't have to even break my stride, and submitted it. And, you know, kudos to our graffiti abatement folks, they happen to be out. By the time I walked the other direction, an hour and a half later, it was already taken care of. So when you're talking about how effective this app is, it really does communicate to the right people and quickly. And so this, this really does provide just a wonderful service to, to help our staff know where to go. I mean, if they'd had to receive an email and then back at their desk, then come back, then, then, then figure out where this is going to be at, try to sort through whatever I wrote in there to figure out, oh, it's at the corner of such and such, right across from wherever. Maybe I submitted some pictures, but I probably forgot to grab any pictures or upload it to my computer by the time I get home. I mean, compared to our old process, this is just light years ahead. So strongly encourage everyone to use this. It is, it is fantastic for, for me as a user. Potholes have been fixed. I get comments on, you know, you know, cracks in sidewalks, other, other issues. There's a light pole issue once, I think that was actually a PUD issue, rotten out of city issue, and staff, I think, forwarded on to the PUD so that that connection was made so they could resolve that as well. So it's been really, really effective from, from my perspective as an end user. And I'm very proud that we've adopted this and it's exciting. So thank you for the update on John.
Certainly. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any further questions from council? Looks like there's none. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Great information. And with that, we'll move on to item six miscellaneous council discussion. City manager?
Nothing this evening.
I do actually have a little information to share. Really would like to invite the community, everyone that's watching, everyone that's sitting here and is interested. We do have an open seat for District Three. June twenty-seventh, applications are, is the deadline correct for applications to be accepted?
That's correct.
And then by July eleventh, someone will be appointed. I would also do a little segue and come back to Ask Pasco app. If you hit that app button, it'll direct you to the application to apply for this open seat. Thank you. And with that, we do move on to item.
I just had, you reminded me of something, Mayor. This last weekend, Ms. Sparks, Ms. Elly Sparks, I believe, has already reached out to council via email and extended invitation, but just wanted to reiterate it that on Friday evening at Chihuahua High School is the Juneteenth pageant. And so the community is welcome to go. And it's been taking place for twenty years. So established event. And so council members are encouraged, staff and residents. And on a different, entirely different note, wanted to ask either, either of our chiefs, just about an update on legislation that was passed this last session for state IDs for people with a developmental delay or disability, as they have new symbols on those IDs that people can self-elect to say, hey, I have a hearing disability. So just wanted to know, are emergency medical professionals and first responders trained on identifying and making that part of their process?
So Chief Gere is on the line. Perhaps he could answer that.
Actually, I have to say, I am unaware of that legislation. I will look it up tomorrow. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm gonna cite it for you so that you know. It is SB, SSB sixty-four twenty-nine, Disability Designation and Medical Alerts for Department of Licensing. Hope you got that, Chief Gere.
I did. I wrote it down. I, I'm not familiar with that. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just learned about it a month ago, too. And it, at least in the Ben Franklin Parent Advocates for Disabilities, People with Disabilities, it's a coalition that I attend. It's a big win for those parents because, you know, as most parents with an adult child disabilities, the fear is that, you know, they are going to pass on before their adult child. And so at that point, who would be caring for that adult child with disabilities? And sometimes they are nonverbal and cannot advocate for themselves that their behavior is unusual because, fill in the blank. And so for the, this parent coalition, it's a really big win to be able to have that identifier on a state ID so that when, whether it's emergency medical or first responders get to a scene, that they can know this person's not being noncompliant just for the heck of it. It's because of a very valid reason.
I will certainly look it up tomorrow and let you know. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Chief. Mr. Zabel?
I did have one other item. My apologies. The Juneteenth celebration is this Saturday, and I wanted to make sure council was aware of that. Mayor Barajas is gonna be reading a proclamation as part of the festivities. I think the celebration begins around ten o'clock and goes till six in the evening. The city will have, we stepped up our partnership with the Juneteenth folks this year, and we'll have three, I think, booths set up. There will have a general city one and then one for fire, one for police as well. So we're all excited about that.
Thank you for that. Since we're just info sharing like crazy tonight, I do have one for Ms. Peshawn. The Department of Commerce is issuing a grant for three point five million dollars. It, cities under the population of a hundred thousand can apply for it, and it goes to arts and cultural events. And so the arts, the Washington State Arts and Culture Commission is administering the grant on behalf of Department of Commerce and was planning on sending Angela that information about that grant.
Thank you. I would like to expand a little bit on Mr. Zabel's Juneteenth invitation. I learned that City of Pasco has had one of the largest Juneteenth celebrations for almost forty-five years plus on this side of the mountains. So there's several festivities. Friday, the seventeenth, we have the Miss Juneteenth Pageant, as Mr. Zabel mentioned, June eighteenth, Saturday, is the Resource Fair, Health Fair Celebration, food, entertainment. Come and join us at Kirtzman Park. And then Sunday, the nineteenth, is a Gospel Celebration, again at Kirtzman's Park at two PM. So several things going on. Please come and join our community, our diverse community. Help enjoy the, enjoy and celebrate the Juneteenth celebrations. And with that, we move on to item number seven, executive session. We do have a need for executive session. If I'm not mistaken, Article J. Is that correct?
No, ma'am. It's, I believe it's forty-two thirty-one-ten I and forty-two thirty-one-ten G.
Okay. Correct. So the state of council will now meet in executive session to discuss for twenty minutes qualifications of an applicant for public employment per RCW forty-two-point-three-zero-point-one-one-zero LG and discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation per RCW forty-two-point-three-zero-point-one-one-zero LI. And with that, we will be meeting, we will return from our executive session at eight fifteen, eight sixteen.
Good evening, everyone. It is 8:06. Our executive session has adjourned. And with that, this meeting is finished. Have a good night.